Okay, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna start the public hearing. In regards to the Oakland Hills development on Carolina Trace. Just a couple items that I'd like to cover before we do start the public hearing. I would like to have everyone please be respectful. If you signed up to talk, you'll be allowed an opportunity to talk. I prefer no outbursts. I will give warnings, but we want to be respectful and businesslike in the process. Okay? I have a list of speakers, but we'll go ahead and we'll start with Gratisson Development to talk to or talk through the development as it's presented at this time, address any changes, and then we will move into the public comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mark Gratisson, Gratisson Land Development here with you. I guess I should've said that during our work session as well, sorry. A little bit more informal. This evening, I think, I'm not really gonna go through what I went through during the work session, just in essence of time, you have a lot of folks that want to chat and talk with you, so I just wanted to maybe hit a couple highlights and turn it over from there. So, we're here for Oakland Hills, as most of you know, and we're off of Carolina Trace. Looking for a PUD zoning here, as we've discussed during the work session. Plan Commission in December voted 4-1 for a favorable recommendation, as you know, and due to a lot of plan changes, I think is how we got there with them, and we made some several other changes along the way, and I'm just quickly just run through those, not necessarily in a script on the screen, but we added a left turn lane due to the traffic study amendment that we did. We added a commitment in the PUD that will allow the city to help enforce all of the commitments, but also, there was, we put it in there, for the homeowners association to be professionally managed, sorry, professionally managed in the long haul, and therefore then the city has the right to be able to enforce that upon the homeowners association. We also added the, some space for the townhomes off of Carolina Trace by bumping them back to a roughly 90-foot offset of the right-of-way, and we also added a small portion of path to the south of that said right-of-way, or that entrance, so in case the Mingus Farm ever gets developed in the future, to the south of us, it would provide a point of connection at that location. Really, other than that, those were the main changes that was requested from the Plan Commission work session to the time we went to Plan Commission. And then when we went to Plan Commission, we had made those changes and received that 4-1 positive recommendation to come to see the city council here this evening. So, with that, unless you have further questions of myself or my team, then we will turn it over to you guys and let the public have their discussion.
Just a couple items I'd like to point out that came up during the work session in regards to some comments that I've heard from citizens, concerns that I've heard from citizens. One, there is no vinyl siding in this project. It's all gonna be hardy plank, most of it's gonna have stone masonry, a lot of it will have a stone water table around the street-facing properties. It'll go all the way around the property. Some of the custom homes up on top will have one-acre lots, approximately one-acre lots. Those will be custom products, but it'll still hold to the hardy plank and stone masonry. The majority of them are all over 300,000 between the villa and townhomes. The state properties are over, starting in the low 500s and going up from there, and the custom homes are 750,000-plus. The majority of the property will go through the tree board review process to make sure that all the trees, shrubbery, everything is addressed properly to fit into the environment. The backs of homes will have patios, or at minimum, patios or concrete patios. The homes on the east side in the field facing Carolina Trace and walking firm will have either patios or morning rooms, or, I'm sorry, covered porches or...
Or morning rooms, some sort of roof break in the rear to help break up the roofline.
And there is 20 acres of open space that goes along with this entire project. So, those are just some of the concerns that I've heard from citizens that I want to go ahead and point out now as we start to open it up for public comment. I do have a list of individuals that have signed up to speak. Each person will have three, three-and-a-half, if they need to finish a comment, I'll let them go up to four minutes, and then we'll move on to the next individual. At this time, we'll have Amy Seercy step up.
Sorry.
Yeah, if you don't mind. I'm just, Amy, I'm just gonna have him leave the plan up real quick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Amy Seercy. I'm a City of Harrison resident, born and raised here, graduate of Harrison High School. I've served on the Harrison Tree Board for 12 years to keep Harrison a Tree City, USA. I am here tonight as a private citizen expressing my personal opinion, that is all. I'm speaking because I love my hometown's history, so I should work to protect its future. Thank you for this opportunity. I served and worked hard on Harrison's comprehensive plan committee. The professional consultants alone cost Harrison taxpayers over $100,000. The comprehensive plan requires a review every five years. That hasn't happened. Now is the time. The comprehensive plan requires incorporation into the zoning code. That hasn't happened. Now is the time. The envisioned comprehensive plan was a promise made by the city to the people. Will that promise be kept? Your responsibility is to make a side-by-side comparison analysis of the development plan or the PUD or the zoning amendment with the comprehension plan. Ask yourself, does this PUD conform to the letter and the spirit of our comprehensive plan? Look especially close to the proposed berms. The Gratisson Ryan team has already developed Harrison neighborhoods with inadequate berms and trees. Drive around the area, housing developments, drive out New Haven Road to Blue Rock. Look at the berms of Fort Scott, those are good, but compare the berms across the street that Gratisson Ryan gave us at Sedona Ridge, those are bad. My point will be clear if you just do this. Wide, tall, grassy berms with specimen boundary trees are vital for two reasons. Number one, they create a lovely green space that's attractive and more compatible with our community, but they also give the residents privacy. I respect families moving here for our outstanding schools and our country atmosphere. Good for them and good for their kids. But what do you place in your backyard? Private things that you want to protect, like your kids and their playsets, and if you're fortunate, a pool. Safety for those families requires adequately tall berms with green buffer space from the thousands of cars driving by every day, looking into the backyards at those families' children playing and swimming. Those children and those families have deserve a reasonable expectation of privacy. I urge you all, recruit the comprehensive plan committee to get back to work, conduct a review and refresh of the plan concerning the reality of what you're all experiencing right now. This explosion of growth in Harrison is the new reality of Harrison. So, look at the comprehension plan with the fresh eyes of this new growth, unprecedented historical growth that we are, that we're experiencing. Then, after you do that, you can make decisions on any PUD or development plan that's submitted to you. I understand the weight of decision-making. You will never please everyone. One way or another, if people are unpleased by your decision, they'll let you know, trust me on that one. You must weigh the facts and the data and the information that's presented to you with the rules and regulations and ordinances and laws. And when you weigh these two, and where they meet is where you'll make your decision. And right there, at that place where you'll, the intersection where you make your decision, that is where your burden lies. The historical growth in Harrison requires all of you to make heavy decisions. Do not allow others to rush you to judgment. Take the time you need. Ask the hard questions, because every one of you deserves thorough and thoughtful answers before you make such a monumental decision. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Gail Chuck.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Gail Chuck. Speaking is a proud 40-year, 46-year resident of the Harrison community, member of the Front Door Project and chairman of the Harrison Tree Board. At the December 12th Planning Commission meeting, I spoke at length, giving a timeline of six-year experience, the Tree Board head with Gratisson Ryan. Mr. Ryan tonight said again, as he said then, he didn't know about the Tree Board, but I have documentation, emails, and meeting reports to say that he did know about our Tree Board. Harrison is a Tree City, USA. We care a lot about our trees and our landscape. I had pictures of ineffective berms with dead trees, two-year problem with planting and removal of calorie pears, pears that should not have been planted in the first place, the poor selection and inferior qualities of yard trees. Gratisson Ryan repeatedly have been deceitful to the Tree Board and to Shannon Hammond about properly planting and then replacing trees that were supposed to be a buffer between the subdivision and New Haven and West Roads. No one knew that West Haven would look like this when it was built. No one knew it. You now can visualize what Oakland will look like, too. You cannot trust these companies. They fooled you once, don't let them fool you again. PUDs allow flexibility for community development and zoning regulations. They should be positive for the community, but not all PUDs are created alike. There are some good PUDs and some bad PUDs. This Oakland PUD is bad. Parks of Whitewater allows a variety of rooflines to create visual appeal. Increase in high-quality amenities, including a swimming pool, a beautifully landscaped entrance and exit, aerated ponds, walking and bike paths. Contrast this with West Haven, which is a Gratisson Ryan development, that his cookie-cutter appearance in clam honeysuckle scrub trees and shrubs is their common green space. What children would choose to play amongst honeysuckle and briars? This entire PUD gave you a playground with one jungle gym on a lot less than 50 feet wide. Oakland Hills PUD will also give you homes with the same monotonous rooflines. They count land filled with questionable trees and brush as common in open space. Again, unusable. This PUD offers no tree-lined double-entry exit, no clubhouse, no swimming pool, no bike or walking trails. The city gets nothing creative or innovative with this PUD. What does Gratisson Ryan get? A lot more houses squeezed on land that should be zoned R1. They really get R4 PUD overlay, high-density housing, while getting little in return. Their property should be zoned R1, low-density, with single-family homes on 90-foot-wide lots, front-faced on tree-lined streets with other privacy barriers as listed in the already existing Harrison codified ordinances, which you have copies. The Currys have a right to sell their property to anyone they want. You have the responsibility to deny this PUD, a zoning change our community does not want or need. The Planning Commission should have stopped this again last month, as they previously did, because this is the wrong PUD. This can be a lovely development that meets R1 zoning, more in line with the envisioned plan, one you are proud of, and you would put your name on it, not this PUD, which is really R4, high-density housing. Vote no, oppose this PUD, and consider R1 zoning. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Mr. Gandy.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. Do you have a video for the last one?
Yes.
Can you give that to you or to...
Oh, I think, do you have it queued up for the video for the last one?
All right, do not.
Okay.
Is it in the...
For the last.
Is it in the last?
Thank you, Mr. Gandy.
Good evening. I am Todd Gandy of 10507 Asheville Pine Court, Harrison, Ohio, 30-year resident. As part of the Front Door Project, we started a petition in opposition of the Oak Hills development as proposed. The petition was conducted both online and in person. When petitioning for signatures, we did ask the participants to be 18 years of age or older and a resident of the 45030 zip code. Petition reads, "We, the undersigned residents of the Harrison, Ohio 45030, are against the resubmitted Gratisson plan for the Oakland Hills development. We believe this development gives rise to increased school overcrowding, traffic issues, and public safety concerns. With the high density we're facing dwellings, there's a very wide discrepancy between our city's comprehensive envisioned plan and the resubmitted plan. We thank city council for soundly rejecting the original supplemental and are respectfully requesting another no vote for a similar proposal." To date, we have over 1,000 signatures. Of these, more than half of the signatures have been obtained in person. Over 75% are residents of the City of Harrison. Residents from over 50 city streets have signed this. More important than the number of signatures obtained were the conversations that we had with residents. Overwhelmingly, we found that the people were more than willing to sign and express their concerns and disapproval of this project. A large number stated that they had attended a meeting and/or several meetings, or stood in the overflow area. Their concerns were the same as we have been hearing throughout the city and addressing here in this room over the past months. Again, it was mostly traffic issues, overcrowding of schools, public safety, concerns around power outages, as well as the overall density, lack of planning, and unappealing aesthetics of the proposed plans were also mentioned. In recent years, when other new developments were proposed, a handful of residents voiced concerns of opposition. With the Oakland Hills proposal development, there's been countless numbers who have attended meetings. Please be mindful of the fact that, to our knowledge, no one has stood up at a meeting stating that what Harrison really needs right now is a more, another high-density development. The community has banded together to urge that we've had enough housing without the proper planning. I do want to thank our mayor and our city council for the time for listening to our concerns, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Hurlinger?
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hello. A little chilly out tonight. Hi, I'm Jeanne Hurlinger, I'm with Front Door Project. I live on Deer Trail Drive, and I've been there for 40 years. There are many reasons why Oakland Hills is not the right subdivision for this property on Carolina Trace. The first, one reason that I think is being overlooked is probably the obvious reason. The Front Door Project considers this particular product, property to be the front door of residential properties in Harrison. As you enter Harrison, it's gonna be one of the first residential properties that you're going to see. This neighborhood makes a statement about Harrison, and it should be an impressive statement. This particular property is a desirable location that offers golf course views on one side of the street and panoramic views overlooking Harrison on the opposite side of the street. A property that offers country living while still having access to amenities like the library, school, parks, golf courses, restaurants, retail stores, churches, and health facilities. This property is also a quick jump onto I-74, minutes to Cincinnati, its airport, and just over an hour to Indianapolis or Dayton. This residential property should be one of the most sought-after properties in Harrison. Therefore, we should have an impressive neighborhood to complement this property, a neighborhood offering sophisticated homes built with blended textures and finishes like stone, wood, brick, rock, with interesting and creative rooflines. Homes on lots that are neither too big nor too small, a neighborhood that offers amenities like pools, clubhouse, playground, mature trees, walking trails, and a golf cart path taking you to Circling Hills Golf Course, just to name a few. It should be attractive from the street and have an entrance with exquisite landscaping making you feel welcome as you come into the neighborhood. There has to be a better plan than the one that's proposed. There is a huge outcry from the community against this proposal, like most of the people here tonight, I assume. The social media comments on this topic are overwhelmingly 90% against this subdivision. I've been working on this project for almost two years. I've spoke with many people over that time, and rarely do I find people who are for this Gratisson Ryan subdivision. For all we know, there may be other developers, I've actually spoke to a few, who may be interested in this site but can't communicate that until this is resolved. Actually, city council voted unanimously not to approve 249 homes on May 6th. This new plan only has six less homes, 243, not a significant change and still high-density by any definition. I believe you owe us the responsibility of making a decision that is the best decision for the Harrison area. Who would be here when these homes are finished five or 10 years later? Gratisson Ryan or the residents of Harrison? Our city and future homeowners deserve to have a home builder who offers creativity, has a positive reputation in our community, and is easy to work with. After all, this is our community, and this decision will impact the future of Harrison. Harrison area should offer beautiful neighbors that invite people to want to come and live here, make Harrison their home, and not pass us by for another community that will give them what they're looking for. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Joette. Ms. Tony, just give me one second, please. And I apologize, how do you pronounce your last name?
Malillo.
Malillo? Okay.
We want to see the video at the end.
Okay.
After he...
So, that's the video of...
After Kip, after Kip. That's okay.
Okay, please, proceed.
All right. Okay, my name's Tony Malillo, and I live at 10432 Deer Trail Drive. Harrison has a traffic problem that needs to be addressed before we build any more high-density subdivisions. Traffic becomes more complex with each new development, yet there is no master transportation plan for a community growing as fast as Harrison, one of the top five fastest-growing municipalities in Ohio. In the 2018 envisioned plan, in the northern neighborhood section, the last two bullets state, "Improve the width and alignment of New Haven Road between Carolina Trace and Short Road, and update existing road infrastructure to improve capacity and reduce traffic congestion and travel times." Not only is your document calling out the need for an overall plan to address traffic, but it specifically refers to the areas that developments have either recently been built or are proposed to be built. Addressing this traffic problem was important in 2018, and it's still important now. Mr. Gratisson has repeatedly said that traffic is an emotional issue. However, according to city records, there have been a 15% increase in auto accidents year-over-year for the last two years. That's a fact, not emotion. In addition, anyone who actually lives in Harrison knows that we already have long wait times on West if you're turning onto Carolina Trace to get to the schools or Kroger, or if you use Drive Fork Road exit at rush hour, just two examples. If we add 243 homes, potentially, I don't know, 400-plus cars, it will only intensify this issue, not to mention the 483 homes already being built on Edgewood. We haven't even seen the impact of those yet. We've talked about the need for front-facing homes on Carolina Trace. Gratisson shrugged this off as a safety issue, inferring that the driveways would run out to Carolina Trace, but no one is suggesting that. We need an interior access road within the development to allow for those homes to be flipped so that they can face Carolina Trace. This would be a better visual as people enter the front door of Harrison, as well as offer privacy to those homeowners. Mr. Gratisson said it's only seven homes. I say, great, that should make it easy to create a short access road for those seven homes. Finally, Gratisson conducted a traffic study based on a very small area around this potential new development, and they did exactly what they were asked. It's not their problem if people fly down Carolina Trace, or that we already have a larger traffic issue, but it is our problem. There is talk of widening the Drive Fork exit, a growing pain that would prove challenging under normal circumstances. But imagine the rerouting of all that traffic onto New Haven, and then imagine that with the additional Edgewood homes and these homes. Please do not approve another high-density development until we address current infrastructure and traffic issues. Thank you.
Peter Davis. Good evening, Mr. Davis.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Peter Davis. I, some friends of mine, I'm a licensed architect for 40 years now, some friends of mine that live here, asked me to come out and kind of take a look at this thing and give you some of my comments. I was born and raised not too far from here, so I sort of knew this area. I was out in California, mainly working on residential projects.
Sir, could you speak up just a little bit?
Sure. I was, I practiced most of my career out in California, mostly in residential, and I did a lot of planning unit developments on both sides of this process, as an architect and a developer, and as working on a board. I've been on design boards and commissions and reviewing things. And what I was gonna come to say was that, you know, PUD, by definition really, is a, as you know, right in your zoning ordinance, talks about, you know, planning unit development is a type of development, which is, you know, relaxation and zoning ordinances, but it really is to create and promote, you know, better design and help the community along. So, there's kind of balancing of back and forth, you know, the developer gets things, but also the community does, too. And I've been looking at this, and I haven't seen a lot of things in this plan that really says, "We're gonna give you some relaxed zoning ordinance issues," but it has to be a betterment, a betterment for the community and the city. And those are the main things that I came at, and I was like, you know, the PUD allows for some development standards, and they talk about trying to have, it's a chance to have, you know, better design, more innovative design. And while I don't know if this has gotten there, I think there's a chance to get there eventually. And I think one of the things that really came to mind with me, I noticed your community has design guidelines for, you know, businesses and commercial, and as a PUD process, we've done this before in other places, that it would allow you the opportunity to maybe create design lines, design guidelines, it could be just for this development. And one of the ways we handled a lot of that with, you've got such a big turnout of people that really... and a developer, and as working on a board. I've been on design boards and commissions and reviewing things. And what I was going to come to say was that, you know, PUD, by definition really is a, as you know, right in your zoning ordinance, talks about, you know, planning unit development is a type of development which is, you know, relaxation and zoning ordinances, but it really is to create and promote, you know, better design and help the community along. So there's like a balancing of back and forth. You know, the developer gets things, but also the community does too. And I've been looking at this and I haven't seen a lot of things in this plan that really says, we're going to give you some relaxed zoning ordinance issues, but it has to be a betterment, a betterment for the community and the city. And those are the main things that I came at, and I was like, you know, the PUD allows for some development standards, and they talk about trying to have, it's a chance to have, you know, better design, more innovative design. And while I don't know if this has gotten there, I think there's a chance to get there eventually. And I think one of the things that really came to mind with me, I noticed your community has design guidelines for, you know, businesses and commercial. And as a PUD process, we've done this before in other places, that it would allow you the opportunity to maybe create design lines, design guidelines, it could be just for this development. And one of the ways we handled a lot of that with, you've got such a big turnout of people that really want to, you know, are concerned about this and have a lot of interest in it, is we created design review boards or an advisory committee that represents the community. You can have a few residents, a few people that are in the trades, maybe some design professionals, landscape or architect, even some, a developer that's, if any, live in the area, but just let them review and give their comments so it can be followed, especially at that preliminary design level that you have, which is the next step. So you've got your concept, which is what you're going through right now, but when you get to that preliminary process of approval, that would be a chance for you to say, hey, it would be really nice to let the community speak and follow it all the way through instead of, at this level, not getting, it's going to be hard at any other levels for them to have a feeling of comfort about what's going on and what's happening. And I think, you know, to create, I mean, good design doesn't have to be expensive, and everybody deserves good design. That was sort of a quote from Frank Lloyd Wright when he designed all these Utonian houses. And I think you could have an opportunity to kind of let this process be, go along a little further and more comment come in. You know, there's a lot of issues that I won't get into as far as, you know, what people have been talking about, but I think, however it ends up getting approved at this level, I think it should get followed through all the way to the end, that you have a chance to let everybody follow it through to the end, and you can, I would imagine you would be able to do that, just for a PUD to say, oh, everything that's in this area needs to go through a design approval process that will allow the process to continually to get monitored and checked, and, you know, you know, along with, you know, your expertise, the planning department and everybody, but it really helps to get, everybody has a small, you know, and it's not the same level of, you know, we won't want to approve this per se, but the whole thing is, let everybody put their feedback and guidelines. It's hard to, you know, you've got 200 and some houses, and how do you go about letting them all, you know, get a little bit of comfort level of what's going on, whether it's the landscaping or the layout which you're doing now, but I think for it to be, as you get into more detail, things going on with the design process and the back-and-forth compromising, I think that would be, to me, that, just looking at it, there's a lot of other issues, but that's one thing that, you know, will be helpful, I think, as this goes further on in the process.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thanks.
Evening, sir.
Bodyguard here.
I need a bodyguard wherever I go.
Actually, this is Mr. Lowe. He's our CFO with Southwest Local Schools. He's been working with us for six years now. And my name's John Hamster. I'm the superintendent of Southwest Local Schools. This is my eighteenth year out here and eighth as superintendent, which is fairly rare. Normally, it's about a three-year stint and then people bail, but here we've had a lot of continuity, which has been good in my opinion. Thanks for having us. Usually, I'm over by you guys. It feels good to be over here for a little bit. We're not coming here with an agenda or an angle. We're here simply to inform folks on the current enrollment of our schools, cost projections, and our future to accommodate the growing population that we serve in the sixty-eight square miles that make up our school district, which is ironically the same size as Washington, DC. There are those that believe that the schools in the eight different cities, municipalities, and townships that we, that comprise our school district should simply control what they control, do what they do, and not worry about the others. The main problem with this approach is, we rely on one another, and we need one another in order to do what's best for the folks we serve. They deserve for all of us to be on the same page and working in unison for the betterment of our kids and our future. At the heart of any community are the schools, and we fully understand the importance of all groups working together for the best tomorrow. We are not anti-growth. In fact, we love bringing in new families and students. Families love moving here for our schools and the offerings of this area, and we take great pride in this piece. As we said back in the summer of sixteen, behind every amazing school district is an incredible community that supports our schools, not just in words, but in actions. Back in 2016, when the levy passed to build four new schools, we had eight hun, or three, 3,858 students that attended Southwest Local Schools. Today, we have 4,517 total students. The three new elementaries and new middle school were built, we've, since they've been built, we've added nearly 660 new students to our roster. For perspective, last year, we graduated 255. So we've added almost three entirely new graduating classes in just six, seven years. In just four months from now, the class of twenty-four has 310 students, fifty-five more than the year before, and a, almost nearly twenty percent increase. Next year, the class of twenty-five is at 340 students. And our largest graduating class that we have on our books currently is our second graders with 410 students. The point is, we are not shrinking like most school districts in Ohio, nor are we leveling off due to the universal vouchers or school choice, which some would like to assert, but we're actually growing rapidly. The fact is, we're one of the fastest-growing school districts in Southwest Ohio. Space in our schools is at a premium and will continue to be so moving forward. Our desire to see responsible growth that we can keep up with as a school district. All four of our new schools were built with the intention of adding on at some point. Crosby Elementary has exceeded capacity with over 800 students currently. Capacity is 650. And a new addition will take place out of pocket in the very near future for four and a half million to add eight new classrooms. Miami Whitewater Elementary, Harrison Elementary, and Harrison Junior School are nearing capacity. And then we have the high school, which was built for around 200, or 1,280 students back in 1969, or around 320 per grade level. That's also taking on more and more kids each year due to larger graduating classes, somewhere in the 355 to 400 range. So again, we welcome responsible growth and need to have a plan for the largest class sizes moving forward. We'll be out of space at the high school in the very near future. Some would say, why are you all not tripping over yourselves for hundreds of new homes? That means you all be flush with cash. Think of all the tax dollars. The reality is, taxing.
So we are very proud to keep taxes in Harrison at the lowest legal level for real estate taxes. We collect twenty mils of operating taxes, and we'd like to keep it that way. To give you an idea of cost for a student, in Harrison, it costs about $12,264 to educate each individual kid that comes through our district. Compare that on the high end, Indian Hill takes about $20,115 per student, so they're really efficient. And on the low end is Bethel Tate with $9,862 per student. So to give you a perspective, we're in the top ten percent of most financially efficient districts in the state of Ohio. In Harrison, the average home is about $180,000, and that home payer, taxpayer pays around $1,300 in taxes to the school district. That's roughly forty-six percent of your tax bill. The average homeowner pays $562 of earned income tax to the schools on a .75% earned income based on the $75,000 federal average income in Harrison. The state also kicks in another $4,360 per student. The Fed's kicking about $548 per student. So what does all this add up to? When we do residential developments that outpace commercial and utility developments, what that leaves us with is a negative balance. A residential development costs the school district more than if it's balanced with other things. So for every house we build, if we build no other commercial development, that new home net neg, is net negative with one student in that home, is about a net negative $3,000 to the school district. So you can see that adds up cumulatively over time. Slow, steady growth, the school can maintain. And as the, the district becomes wealthier, the state will give us less money as well. So that's something to keep in mind. So in the long run for us, sustainable growth is important, and we're not here to say, don't do a development or to do the development. We will live with whatever decision that you may have. As far as right now, our five-year forecast is balanced based on eighty students a year. So any more growth than the eighty students a year that we have would require additional operating and capital. At some point, we will need a, a new high school. That would be a new capital levy to begin with. As we see additional growth, it's likely that we're going to pace out the size of that building. So again, our main concern is being able to provide for the kids and not have to ask for more money. So we're just coming to you to kind of give you an idea of where things shake out from a school district and finance perspective. Thank you for your time.
I got to close here real quick. I'll go fast. Just some numbers for perspective, recent developments. Parks of Whitewater, 501 students coming out of 350 homes. I'll say that again, 501 students out of 350 homes. That's over five buses. 1.43 students per home. Whitewater Trails, just to the north of that, 337 students out of 300 homes, which is around 1.12 students per. Fort Scott, 352 students coming out of 350 homes, which is 1.01. West Haven, 117 students coming out of those, 130 homes, which is .9. The Villas of West Haven, which we've spoken to before, eight students. I said one student getting on a bus, but there's eight students that we have back in the Villas of West Haven out of the 113 Villas, which is .07. And then the Villages of Whitewater, 16 students coming out of 156 townhomes. So just to paint, to paint a full picture. Generally speaking, the older the development, the more school-aged students we get, except for Fort Scott, which is due to a high parochial population out that way. This project, projections, I did have our Director of Operations run numbers on what he thinks we're going to be at ballpark, and he's anywhere from 75 to 85 new students coming out of this development, roughly. And when you say, oh, that's not bad, you guys just said you're planning for 80 kids, well, keep in mind, we've got to worry about the, the development on Edgewood Road as well, as well as any others that get approved, then obviously, that's not this group. And, but we've got to be concerned with. These students would go to Miami Whitewater Elementary. This, like I said earlier, this Miami Whitewater is nearing capacity, so we would be probably looking at, in addition, at some point, which these buildings were built for. Again, we're not here to push an approval or a voting development, or voting development down. We're here to provide the facts with regards to the enrollment numbers that we're seeing and then the cost to educated child. We appreciate you guys' time and for serving the good folks here in our community. We know it's not easy. Thank you.
Okay, that was Two Birds. Kit Monroe. How you doing, sir?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Good.
My name's Kit Monroe. I'm with Front Door Project. Gotten to know many of you guys over the last year. I'd like to start by thanking all of you. Sometimes we've locked horns, sometimes it's been contentious, but there's been a lot of good conversations along the way, too. And so, yeah, just a thanks to you, and you've been very open and patient with us, and we certainly appreciate that. I currently live at 10446 Walking Fern Drive, but more importantly, I grew up at 126 Jefferson Street, right across from Councilman Acre. I was thinking today when it was cold, we probably sat at the same school bus stop on the corner together many times. Little did we know we'd be here forty years down the road. My mom was a teacher, my dad was a proud member of the Snow Lodge, and my more talented brother was a Wildcat quarterback. So I, I come here with some skin in the game. I think it's ironic that the proposed Oakland Hills development is just up the road from the intersection of Carolina Trace and New Haven Road, because as we all know, Harrison itself is at a crossroads. Over the next two years, the conversations we have, decisions we make, and the actions we take will determine exactly what kind of town we leave our kids and our grandkids. The easy road, the one where we acquiesce to developers, and if it makes us feel better, we can call that progress? Or maybe even a better word is pragmatism, because no one got sued? But the other option, the better option, is to make tonight the night we draw a line in the sand, and we resolve that we, the people of Harrison, will determine our own destiny and not leave it to the whims of developers. So before you vote, I would ask you to consider four things. First, no one knows for sure exactly what this development is even going to look like, because until tonight, briefly, no one has seen any renderings from the entire west side of Carolina Trace. And even tonight, they flew by them, and, and I think there's a technical term for the way they were rendered, which is make-believe. You know, the trees, the trees looked like they were 50 years mature, and, and I think the perspectives were such that they really gave a, you know, a, two of an ideal look at what these are going to be. So I would ask you guys, before you even vote tonight, go back and really hold those drawings and those renderings under some scrutiny, because I think, I think we need to be very clear and sure about what this is going to look like. You get a mulligan for West Haven. I've heard members of council saying, we didn't really know what West Haven was going to look like. But, but this time, I think you're going to have to be accountable. You need to know 100% what you're going to get, and I don't think, I, I haven't seen any proof of concept yet, and I doubt really whether you guys have. The second point I'd like to make is that some people joke that we're settlers out here in Harrison, because we'll settle for anything. Well, let, let's, let's not settle this time. Let's hold out for a development we're excited about and we can be proud of. We've got a new mayor, we've got Matt Eisenbrow. My guess is if they go out and bang the drum and spread the gospel about Harrison's potential, that it won't be very long before they ring the bell. Let's give these guys a chance to show the world what Harrison can do. Go out, get more business, get a better PUD. I think these are the gentlemen that can lead that charge. Consideration three is the Envision Plan. We need to revise it, but this time, let's update the language in the zoning code, actually give it some teeth. That's probably what we should have done the last time. And while we're at it, let's bring our friends at the schools, let's bring the township, let's set up a, a task force or a coalition, let's bring the community together in a spirit of cooperation. I think that's something we heard when we went out and got these petitions signed. Everybody wants their government to play nice in the sandbox. And finally, you should consider there are thousands of City of Harrison and Township residents who are aligned with us, who are not here tonight. We've got the back room filled, and we've got this room filled, so we have a good crowd, but no, there's thousands more. You know, maybe they're not here because of the cold, but more likely, they've become so jaded and apathetic about all things government that they've just simply checked out. The good news is there is a cure for apathy, and it's called hope. So I respectfully ask City Council to once again vote this development down, as you've done in the past. It just may rekindle a spirit of hope and optimism that changes the course of Harrison for many years to come. I thank you for your time. I thank you for this year-long journey, and I, I recognize you have a hard job and this is a tough decision, and so we certainly appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
We're going to let Joette queue up the last comment.
While she is working on that, just because of time, I do want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking your thoughts around the development. We will allow Gradison to make a couple comments after the public session ends, and then we will move into, we'll take just a real short break and then move into the city council meeting. So, ready?
This is Rocky Bullen.
Unfortunately, I can't read lips.
Can't hear you, Rocky.
Whoever brought this in, do you have any idea where there's?
Rocky Bullen. He is a former NFL football player, author, radio, talk show host. He does, he lives in Harrison. In Harrison Township. North of town.
For eleven years. I'll call you as often.
Yeah.
While we're waiting for this, if you can state your name and where you live?
Absolutely. My name's Melissa Crater. I live right now here on Friday. I've been a Herson resident for 34 years, since day one, they brought me home. I did email you guys, so thank you. If you ever read the email, I'd be very interested. I'm a mom of two boys in Harrison, eight or nine years old. I have the nineteen back from him being in a rape fort, hopefully read her okay. We're so kind of, both years of residence. This will impact our kids' schools, more than raising kids, sorry. My kids will go to Harrison Elementary, which we know that is a rape-free school. All our students are rape-free. I know. But my fear is the amount of... But my fear is the amount of children there per teacher, first of all, what kind of education that we can get. That's my biggest thing as a mom coming to you. I'm involved in a lot of stuff, my kids are involved in, I'm involved in the city, I see all the kids love being here. I'm not against the development. I have so many great friends in Parks Park, at Whitewater, all those little developments out there. I don't have a doubt that it won't bring good people in. But kind of, my hope is pump the brakes. See what this new development out on Edgewood brings to us, how it affects our schools, how, like things are mentioned, saying that we're proud of this, that we are going to see. It's anticipated, it's it's gonna come, people love Harrison, I'm all here. So my, just, well, the thing for the kids is my thing. Pump the brakes a little bit, the development looks beautiful, aesthetically pleasing, so I can't say anything bad about the looks of it. I might be ignorant to it, but my big thing is think of the kids, the impact it's gonna have on our schools. I don't think, as far as the teachers giving the education, it's gonna be impacted, but what they receive from the education, if that makes sense. Being able to reach every student like we do now, we're awesome teachers, putting more students in the classroom, that's what I think.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Hurlinger, did you get that to?
I think so.
Good evening, my name is Rocky Boyman. My family and I currently reside at one one seven one eight Carolina Trace Road, where we have for the past going on eleven years. Sorry, I can't be at the meeting here tonight, but work duties call. I, like many others you've heard from tonight, am against the development of the property in question as is currently laid out. Now, to be very clear, myself nor many of the folks you hear from tonight are against development. I want Harrison to be developed. I talk about this community all the time, I want families to move here, and I want things to go on, good things to happen for Harrison, but it's gotta be done the right way. What what I'm against is slamming yet another hastily-built, highly-dense development right on the doorstep of Harrison without any consideration for its impact on schools, on traffic, or frankly, the residents that currently reside in Harrison. These are folks that moved from other surrounding communities out to Harrison because they liked the rural nature of Harrison, the fact that it had a little bit of space to it. That's why they like Harrison, that's why they chose to live here, and how they hope Harrison continues. So in my opinion, this property deserves much better. So to be clear, your legacy as an elected official is on the line tonight. How are you gonna be remembered? Are you gonna be remembered as someone who voted to allow Harrison to grow the right way, the smart way, the way that really sets it apart from other surrounding towns? Or did you vote to allow Harrison to become yet another highly-dense, run-of-the-mill, nondescript town like so many others in this area? Choice is yours, we hope you will consider voting this property development down and reconsider another smarter development for all of Harrison. Thank you very much, enjoy your evening.
Grattisum, would you like to step up and make any last comments? Thank you, Joe Ett, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. We need a few minutes to address a few, address a few of these items, if I can. So we thank you to the residents and their concerns and and the time that we've had today to be able to to discuss Oakland Hills, which we feel from our perspective is a, is a much improved project from where we were two and a half years ago. So this project hasn't happened overnight, as as most of you know. This has been a long process to go through, multiple designs, doing pretty much everything that's been asked of us by staff, by plan commission, by most of the folks that we've had interactions with at the, at the, at the Harrison level. As far as the school goes, thanks to Superintendent on on their conversations as far as number of folks, number of kids they project into the schools. I'm gonna go down to ours. And ours isn't a whole bunch different compared to theirs, certainly some, but when we, we, we did our calculations based off what we thought we had at the Villas, and obviously, that number has changed somewhat. But we had four to five kids in the Villas. Point two is kind of the national average for for townhomes, which would mean fifteen to sixteen kids in the estate, and custom, about point six kids per unit. So we came up with fifty in our calculations. They just mentioned seventy-five to eighty-five. You know, somewhere probably in between might be the right numbers, just depending on on who moves in, right? We don't know, you know, we don't say you can't move into the Villas if you have kids, that's just not the way it works, right? We, we wanna be, you know, we are not restricting this to fifty-five years and older in there. The biggest thing takeaway, though, with the kids is, is that this is, you know, we, we've been talking about this for two and a half years, and by the time this development's finished and the last people move in, it's probably four to five years down the road. So this isn't like we're gonna add eighty-five kids to the schools next year, or the following year, or the following year. This is, this is a process that happens, it takes time. We won't have people living in, in, you know, if this is approved, we won't have anybody living in the community until mid-twenty-five, probably. So we've, this isn't going to be dropping fifty kids on on the first year and thirty kids in the second year, it is going to be a longer process than that. For clarification purposes, I think as it relates to our developments in the past, we, we did not do, I think it was called Sedona, that Ms. Chuck, Ms. Chuck referenced, we did not do that development. So the only development we've done in Harrison has been West Haven. And that wasn't a development that we authored any of the design or 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 even much of the zoning part of things. We've listened very intently to tree board, to, to staff, to plan commission, to you as the council, as far as what is the difference in expectation levels for this development compared to what West Haven is. We totally get that, and and I think, you know, yes, it is a design, it is not actually installed yet, and I'm going to our landscape part of things, but we have a substantial commitment on the front end of this development from the mounding. And these, I'm just focusing in so you can see them, but these are four to five to six-foot mounds, gonna be depend on the size, and you can see, they have plenty of trees, not plenty, that's probably not a good term. Let's use, you know, looks, looking at, one of the ones that I'm looking at now is is this one in particular. This is gonna be roughly, I'm gonna call it seventy-five feet wide, and there's one, two, three, four, five, six trees, oh, seven, actually, there's one here. Looks like there's an excess of ten shrubs on that one stretch. So we have a substantial landscape package planned here, and will be implemented. It will be further designed as we go through, if we're, if we can, are able to continue down the process. As we bring each section on and we do each, each part of the development, we will bring plans in, and we'll go to the tree board for their approvals of the species that we plan to plant in those locations. So we, we have, I think, the landscape thing covered. We've, we've committed to trees in the rear of yards, two trees in the Villas, two, a tree and two shrubs on the townhomes. The others have plenty of woods around them to help buffer them from, from everywhere else to continue that. And then, as you can see, we have mounds on both sides of the street today, which, again, we didn't have originally, but we have added that through the process. So everybody can see that we've, we've got it on both sides there. As far as traffic goes, as we mentioned in the work session, but we, we did original traffic study that was then, was based upon the criteria that Jim Leslie and the, I think, JMA consultants asked us to study those, these particular areas. We didn't come up with the areas to study, that was given to us. We did that study, it went through a couple of questions and answers and comments from JMA and and from staff here. We've answered those, and it was approved, if you will, accepted as as done. Proactively, we didn't get asked to do it, but proactively, when we reduced the entrance, number of entrances into the development, we went and had that amended. It did call for the left-turn lane, as we asked, which will help from a traffic perspective, so that everybody will be able to run right through, so to speak, drive through, even if somebody's turning into our development. The north, the folks driving north will be able to be unencumbered as they go through. Really, one of the things, you know, people have said, you know, they're pro-development, and they want this to happen. I mean, the Curers have been trying to have a development on this property for, John, ten years? Ten years. They've had lots of different options, they've brought several options to to council, not you guys, obviously, in the years passed. But there's been lots of conversations between the township, between the town of Harrison, city of Harrison, and being able to come up with the right program. They've had maybe more commercial and 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 higher intensity uses, they've tried to do some, some subdivision part of things, and it just, nothing ever really took hold because of where it is and what it is. They, this, this family has owned the farm for over a hundred years, have been longtime Harrison residents, and they deserve the right to be able to sell their ground to, to a development or to, as an opportunity for the family to, you know, they need to be able to sell their ground, is really the bottom line. They have waited patiently on the sidelines, they've, they've annexed the ground into Harrison as a precursor to this whole thing, and and they are, are do some level of respect here for what we're trying to accomplish and what they're trying to accomplish with their site. People in Harrison, and and there are plenty of opportunities to build on larger lots, you know, buying a piece of farm ground and and or five acres from a farmer or or a two-acre site, site here or there, but there aren't that many opportunities for folks who are empty nesters to have a place to live, that they maybe can't cut the grass anymore, and they want somebody else to be able to do that for them. They don't necessarily need two acres any longer, they don't need that yard, they don't need that tractor, they don't have that time to do it, or maybe they go to Florida for the winter time, and they don't have to worry about plowing the snow on the driveway, or cutting the grass in the summer if they want to take off. We have a, several products in the neighborhood that are gonna cater to almost all residents of Harrison. And and some of these products you don't have currently available in Harrison, and, and, you know, for example, are the Villas down on on West Haven, there are zero homes for sale. So it's a well, you know, it's a, it's a community that is, 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 is growing, your community is definitely growing, right, as we've heard? But we're being responsible with what we're doing here, because we've got empty nesters, we've got townhomes, which are gonna have smaller numbers of kids compared to larger traditional single-family homes. And so I think that we're trying to be responsible with what's around us as well. If you look at the zoning map, in the blue next to the red, our, our project is the red at the top of the map, and to the left, you have the industrial and commercial areas adjacent to us. I mean, we don't look out, we do look out on golf course on one side, but we look out to CTS on the other side. And so it has to be some give and take in design, what type of products go where, and so that was part of the reason why the townhomes kind of over on that side of of the development. We, we've, we've, over the last two and a half years, we've done most everything that's been asked of us from staff's perspective. You know, we've talked about from vinyl, having no vinyl in the neighborhood, to cottage-style elevations, to lots of trees in the rear yards, more mounding, pickleball courts, which are obviously popular, if you, if you're here in front of the community center, you see, those are not on days like today, but generally speaking, those are being used, well-used, and we would expect to have other residents coming in to use those. So I think we've got a great development and a great opportunity here, and we'd be happy to answer any other questions that you guys may have at this point in time.
Okay, we're gonna wrap it up, and we're gonna go ahead and close the public session, and then, you guys need to take a, okay, we're gonna take a short break, and we'll go two minutes, and then we'll come back for council.